The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a staff compensation matter, two staff disciplinary matters, a BCUEA contractual matter, and a student health matter. We could all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have introductions.
Dave Horst.
Will O'Leary. Christine Beck.
Jonathan Bush.
Jody Monroe. Holly Dellenbach. Meredith Moriarty.
Chris Meyer.
Randy Sampson. And Judy Keel. First on the agenda is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 2nd, 2020 regular board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next up is our superintendent's report. Thank you. So I wanted to provide an update on the free breakfast and lunch program that was just approved on August 31st. The USDA announced that all K-12 schools could serve all their students free meals through December 31st, 2020.
Or until funding runs out. This is a change. It's a great benefit to the district's families and also to the B.C. food service program. Typically, we only serve about 20 to 25% of the student population lunch each day, so this could change quite a bit. The additional flexibility will provide the program to serve students quicker because no money is involved, and there'll be less record-keeping to serve meals. So our service currently includes meals at home and onsite, and both of those services will be able to be provided for free under the current program, and we will be sending information out about that in the next couple of days. Also, we began this week with our students onsite. It was really great to see the kids coming into the buildings. We started on Monday and Tuesday with half-capacity at the K-6 level. 712 were already alternating hybrid. And I was over Eagle one morning, and the kids were getting off the bus with their new backpacks and lunch packs, and everything seems to be going well. I was over at Slingerlands yesterday for dismissal, which, you know, arrival and dismissal has been quite the undertaking because of our parking lots and not blocking roads, but everything went very smoothly. And I've heard nothing but really positives about, you know, from the schools. The teachers are getting used to the hybrid model with kids at home and some onsite, but it's been really just great having the kids back in the halls and, you know, having some activity in our building. So it's been great. And finally, I just wanted to do an update on construction, so I have some photos to share with the board, and I'll just give a quick update on the high school. So the auditorium, we're pretty much done with it, and we're starting training with a lot of the new electronics that are in there. High school, D-122 is ready for use. The business of... Can you go back, Brittany? Sorry. We are projecting to have most of this work done. The goal is to have it completed by the end of this year to get all of our state aid. And... Okay, go ahead. Sorry. So some of the items that we still haven't completed are the business office, which is being relocated. They have done quite a bit of work in there in the last couple of weeks. The front entrance vestibule at the high school, the middle school pool still needs some work. The high school, the access road still needs some drainage and paving, and we're still looking to do some renovations in the LMC. These will both mostly happen after hours. They won't happen when school... When students are in session. So here's some photos to take a look at. This is D-122, which we were just in. Some of the restrooms, a lot of them at the high school are being... Have been renovated. This is the pool area in the middle school. It looks so...
Wow.
You can believe it. The stair repair, hopefully this one holds. So we've had a lot of paving in our elementary buildings. I know they don't look that exciting, but this is the new Glenn Mott kitchen. I think the board, you guys toured that last year, and it's as much-needed improvements, some additional paving. The stadium, the field bleachers that were installed, the new floor in the gym, the middle school, just some drainage, and very exciting. The business office, this was actually quite an undertaking for the HVAC. This is for the middle school out by the back areas. You go to the field and the gardens. This is... Actually, they've gotten that a little more cleaned up in a few days, the business office. Some new water filling stations that have been installed. This is, I think you've seen the main foyer area. This is some of... The auditorium is just about done. You can see the seating, and yeah, it's even a little more progressed now.
Looks good.
The blend right here. And that's it, right? So those are... We have these on the website. So some of these areas, unfortunately, we're not able to utilize. It would be great if we're able to by the end of the year, but just to give everyone an idea of what some of the almost or finished products look like.
Well, we'd be... Will they be able to use the auditorium at all for, like, to spread out? I don't know.
The orchestra or... One of the issues is the soft seating, and so we have to think... Right now, not really are we able to use it unless we let it then sit for quite some time before the next group uses it. We could use the stage area, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's my report.
I did have a question that I've heard from a few community members with... About what the best way to... For virtual learners, like, on the hybrid... On their hybrid days when they're at home, to give feedback to teachers about what's working and what's not working. So I don't know if you or Dave had any thoughts on that. Specifically, I think there were some concerns that, you know, in terms of pacing, when the teachers are moving quickly through material, and it can be... It's challenging for the student at home to follow along, sort of, you know, what the best way to approach that is.
I mean, knowing that not all classes are the same, I would suggest they reach directly out to the teacher, because every class is going to be different. Working through the teacher would be best, for sure.
Yeah, I would agree. Teacher first.
Okay.
Yeah. I think all the technology, though, has been working great. Thanks, Ray, and his team.
Knock on something.
Watch it crash. No, just kidding.
Did anyone have any questions or comments for Jody?
I don't... I don't have a question. I wanted to, as a parent, express my overwhelming gratitude to all the administrators for how well reopening is going and all the work that went into it and continues to go into it. I literally, like, wept as I dropped my kids off to school because of how safe I feel doing that and how important that is, and I... There are school districts not far from us who are having an entirely different week this week, and I just... I know that we hear a lot of the bad things and a lot of the negative feedback, and I've been trying to focus on the fact that we have so much to be thankful for and positive about here, and I just wanted to thank you and everyone who put a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of work into the reopening.
Thank you.
Were there any issues? Did you have any issues that you came across this week, or everything seemed to go pretty smoothly in all the buildings?
Yeah, I mean, we have some small issues, you know? Like, one of the things we were trying to avoid was having lots of kids, particularly at the middle and high school, being dropped off early because of, you know, where do they go, or them congregating. But I think both Mr. Domell and Mr. Klugman have come up with a solution, so when kids do come in early, they can go... At the middle school, for example, right in that upper gym, already has desks set up six feet apart, so they'll go in there and wait. I mean, it would be ideal if we could have people dropping off, but I understand everyone's got... You know, it's not going to be ideal. And some of the traffic flow is a little bit of a challenge, but I think with time, that will get a little bit better. You know, we knew it was going to take some challenges. The transportation, actually, the buses have been really quite on schedule this year to getting to where they need to be, so...
You weren't that late, huh?
No.
Wow.
So, yeah, so other than just little things that pop up, it's been pretty smooth.
And the time... The earlier time has also worked out.
Yep. Yep.
I would like to add that the drop-off experience at the high school has improved every day. This morning was especially really well orchestrated. If everybody follows the directions, when they're... They motion you to, you know, to get up to a certain part, and you actually drop your child off where they've motioned you to go, you get out a lot faster. That really did work. It wasn't like that on Monday or Tuesday, but it was definitely like that today.
Definitely arrival and dismissal was quite the challenge. In fact, yesterday, when I was over at Slingerlands, I was one of the bus sign people. I had an important duty to do.
It's a big family project at the elementary schools with every available teacher and aide outside, making eye contact with parents, and it's really been a project. Yes. It's been a work in progress.
Yep.
Next up is our board report, and just to follow up on what everyone has said, the only thing that I wanted to mention was just a thank you to the administration and to the teachers and the staff for all of the work that was done so that our kids could get back to school. And, you know, so far, fingers crossed, it's going smoothly. And I would just encourage people, if they're... To be patient, because there may need to be tweaks to things, and if there are challenges that people are facing, that they should let somebody know about it and not just sit on it, because we won't know if you don't tell us. Anybody else?
Did we... Have we had feedback from the virtual academy and how that's been working?
Sure. Dave, you want to just give a quick summary of that?
Yeah. The feedback overwhelmingly has been positive. We have had a few sort of negative ones in that some people kind of thought it was going to be a little bit more like it was in March, a little... Where there really wasn't a schedule, you could come and go as you please. So there's a little bit of getting used to for some folks that, yeah, there's a definite schedule, you have to log on and off at certain times. But we've received great feedback, even from... We had one in particular that stands out of a student that is generally anxious about going to school, and that their experience has been so positive that after the first week on... The shortened week there on Friday said to her mother, "I can't wait to go back to school on Monday. This has been such a great experience." So, I mean, there's still kinks to work out with just trying to navigate, especially the K-2 kids. I don't know that parents necessarily realized how much support they were going to need at home. You know, you can't just sit a kindergarten in front of a screen and say, "Here you go. I'll see you at 3:00." So there's a little bit of that, sort of figuring out with families, trying to navigate how much time they really need to spend with their kids, but so far, it's been going great. Yeah.
Dave, are we doing, at the elementary level in particular, sort of assessments or something to try to figure out where the kids are after the shutdown in the spring?
Yeah, so we're... I mean, this is... We do this every year, but since we've instituted it, we're doing our iReady assessments now through the first week of October to try to gauge where students are versus where they were sort of historically, to help us figure out where there might be gaps. I mean, we were really fortunate in that, I mean, the timing of the shutdown was to the point where, for our core areas, we were fairly close to where you kind of had to be done anyways because of the way the state assessment lines up. So ELA and math, we're pretty much done with the critical content anyways, and social studies and science were able to still get through a lot of the material during the shutdown. So, you know, I really don't anticipate our kids are going to be as far behind as some people kind of feared going into this whole process. Our teachers did, you know, once we kind of figured things out, they did it. I think they did a great job in the spring in sort of triage mode, and I think our kids are going to... They're going to be fine. After a few weeks of getting back into the swing of things to begin the school year, I think you'll see that kids really... They really aren't any further behind than they normally would have been.
Anybody have anything else they want to share? Next on the agenda is our presentation this evening, and Jody is going to be giving us a presentation about fall athletics.
Nope. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I want to... Some of this will be redundant from what I presented at our last board meeting, but I know we've received a lot of feedback about sports, and so I wanted to try and address many of those questions that came in as well. So the first thing I thought was important to clarify are the difference in sports classifications. We talk about low-risk, moderate risk, and high risk, and this is really defined by New York State DOH essentially in combination with what CDC put out. So low risk, you can see, is the greatest ability to maintain physical distance, individual sports, ability to avoid touching shared equipment, cleaning and disinfecting and/or not using any shared equipment at all. When you get into moderate risk, there's a limited ability to maintain physical distance or activities that can be done... That cannot be done individually, essentially. Again, the sharing of equipment is another factor in what classifies as different risk levels. And then for high risk is the least ability to maintain physical distance, and then it's almost really impossible to not have shared equipment. So I also want to address the decision-making timeframe, because like everything with COVID and reopening, it seems like timeframes are irrelevant, and we are making decisions very quickly. So on August 21st, we had area superintendents met with Albany County Department of Health with Commissioner Dr. Whalen to talk about some of the concerns with the current guidance for reopening. At that point, the Department of Health, or Albany County Department of Health, said that we would be receiving updated guidance for reopening of schools from the New York State Department of Health, which we are still waiting for. On the 24th, the governor gave the go-ahead for low-to-moderate-risk sports and also did at that point allow high-risk sports to condition beginning September 21st. And then September 4th was when New York State Athletic Association released their guidance on returning to low, moderate, and high-risk sports. Section 2, which is the section that we are affiliated with, did not make their decision to allow low- and moderate-risk sports to be played until September 10th, and at which time the suburban council asked for districts to make a commitment that same day on what sports we would participate in. In the meantime, we had a lot of discussions about this, both regionally and also with... Within our own district. So on August 25th, there was a regional BOCES meeting, which, when I say regional, I'm talking about there's four BOCES that are part of Section 2, and there were a lot of concerns expressed about sports in general starting within days after schools reopening, but particularly with moderate and high-risk sports. And on August 26th, the New York State Council of School Superintendents asked the governor to reconsider the start date of September 21st and to consider using the January start date with the three-season model that the State Athletic Association had proposed as one of the alternative models. Between August 25th and September 10th, there were lots of district meetings about athletics. We had a discussion about it with our school news coordinator, our school physician. We have an athletics and co-curricular subcommittee that had a discussion about it. We also had a discussion, and Holly and Willie, you're on the reopening committee. I can't remember the exact date of it as well. Then on August 28th, Section 2 actually asked the BOCES to provide feedback about resuming sports, and the CAP region BOCES, there were 18 responses, and out of those 14... 14 of the 18 indicated they would prefer a delay in sports, not preferably the January date, but at least a date to beyond September 21st. On September 2nd, we had our board meeting, and we had a presentation by me, and the board discussed some of the issues related to athletics, and particularly with some of the discrepant information related to reopening schools and starting sports. And then September 9th, the suburban council met, and at that time, there were still several districts who were undecided on whether or not they would hold fall sports or not. I also want to address the issue that we had many comments that we're the only school in the section not to offer moderate-risk sports, and that's simply not true. There are four sections currently, Section 4, 8, 9, and 11, who are postponing all fall sports until January. In Section 2, these are the leagues that are within the section, and you can see that as of today, the foothills postponed all moderate-risk sports, so field hockey and soccer to the March timeframe, or what the state refers to as a fall-to season. The other day, the Western League postponed all fall sports until January, and the... I think Monday, the Western Athletic Conference is... Announced they were only doing low-risk sports, and the other districts left it up to district choice, and the Adirondack League is still undecided. So at this point, there's actually... There's a majority of schools within Section 2 not doing moderate-risk sports at this I also want to address the questions or comments we had related to NISFA's guidance. And NISFA says, right in their document, that this document is for informational purposes only and not intended to replace or change information from the Department of Health or the New York State Education Department. And if you read through their guidance, essentially, most of it, they refer you back to the Department of Health, because most of it has to do with health and safety. So the biggest challenge with thinking about sports is the conflicting guidance related to 12-feet distancing and 6-feet distancing. In the DOH guidance for return to school, there is 12-feet distancing in PE classes or essentially indoors or outdoors wherever aerobic activity is happening or projection of the voice. We had conversations with our local Department of Health rep, as well as our school physician, and they confirmed that anything with heavy breathing, there should be 12 feet and a mask. In the NISFA's return to play, or return to sports, they in fact said that there... That you must ensure a distance of at least 6 feet and refer back to the New York State Department of Health interim guidance for sports and recreation. And they specifically reference the discrepancy with the 12-feet distancing that's required for aerobic activity. This, to me, and to anyone on our reopening plan, including our school physician and the local Department of Health, sees this as a huge contradiction in that you cannot possibly maintain 12 feet or even 6 feet distancing in these activities. One of the other pieces of information, which is a little less relevant really for fall sports, because you can... You can pretty much try and restrict it, but for our reopening plans for schools, there is no use of the locker rooms. We're not using lockers in the hallways because of congregating and being able to socially distance. In the New York State Athletic Association's guidance, they again reference DOH guidance for sports and recreation, but essentially say you have to post signage and distance marking of spaces. Again, just another example of conflicting guidance between reopening schools and reopening Another piece that the Interscholastic Athletics Guidance talks about is risk and promoting risk, and they refer us back to the CDC's guidance, and the next chart I actually shared at last week's meeting. So if you look at this and think about the various sports activities, you can see that the lower risks start with skill-building and exercises at home, team practices, where the highest risk is full competition from different areas. So in our reopening plans, that was presented and submitted to the State Education Department and the Department of Health, we do have 6-feet distancing. Students are wearing masks in class all day, minimizing cohorts on our buses. We have students taking the same buses in the morning, in the afternoon. We're requiring masks on buses and in our classrooms, no sharing of materials, and when materials do have to be shared, they have to be disinfected between uses. I also want to talk about our return-to-school plan. We have 87% of our students who are returning to our buildings. Some districts are 100% virtual, for their high school students specifically. Some have up to 25% to 30% of their students virtual. So when we talk about our return-to-school plans and risk, you have to factor in the number of people in your building on a daily basis in what risk that inherently brings. I also want to address risk, and the message that has also been sent about students already playing sports. We talk about tough choices that people have to make in risk versus benefit, and one of the things I think is a little different than students playing on a school sports team or what they're doing now is that they haven't been in school. They haven't been coming into building with large numbers of people. We have students and staff in our building where if you want to travel... If you want to have your child participate on a travel team, that's one thing, you're assuming that risk, but when they come into our buildings, now you're putting other students and staff at risk. The other piece I want to mention is that we, as a district, have to weigh out what's the risk versus the benefit. And we've reopened our schools successfully, and hopefully will stay open, and so everything we do has to be about risk and is there a benefit to it? And our goal is to mitigate risk, not to add risk, especially not one week into the I also want to bring up the point of equity. There were several comments that we received that athletes are being treated unfairly, and I want to point out that kids right now can't access their teachers after school, and that's because that's DOH's guidance, that they get extra help from teachers virtually. We also have... All of our clubs are virtual. We don't have any music groups or ensembles meeting after school. So currently, the only group of students that will be given permission to stay after school onsite and participate with their peers are our low-risk student athletes. So to say that athletes are being discriminated against is just not true. For transportation, I think everyone knows this is not just our district. There's a huge bus driver shortage. There's a huge bus driver shortage. We don't have late buses. So one of the reasons that we decided to do just varsity level is that we assume most varsity-level athletes could get to and from practices and contests somehow either driving or with a parent. We felt to do that for underclass students would be inequitable. It would place a hardship on students and families. It also would create more students after school that we're having to try and manage. So since, I said, everything changes daily, just in this week, we've learned of several school districts who have said they're moving their moderate-risk sports to a fall-to season. And so what I propose, or what I think that we should do, if things stay positive, if our schools remain open, is that we allow our soccer and field hockey teams to participate in a spring season, which I forget the exact dates, sometime in March through April. They would be competing against potentially other sections who are already planning to do that January-through-spring model. There's also several schools now locally in our section who are going to that model. It's also less likely that, I'm hoping, we'll have a school shut down at that point where in the fall, once a school is shut down, if the teams have participated in a game, the season is over. So I think that, given the number of schools who have now moved toward the fall-to season, that this would be a viable option, again, if everything looks good at that time. So that's a summary of my presentation. And I do, we have six individuals who have been invited to speak on this issue. So I don't know if you all have decided who's going first. Okay, so you can come to this mic right here.
It's down this way?
You can move it up.
Well, yeah, but we're all going to be sharing it, so because we're sharing, we can't touch it. Hello. My name is Diane Berman. My husband and I are the parents of Jack Berman, a senior who plays on the boys' varsity soccer team. I was asked to speak tonight on behalf of all the soccer and field hockey parents. I'm also honored to be here with five of the student athletes affected, Danielle, Marissa, Johanna, Natalie, and Avery. Because our collective time is limited, I'm going to highlight the points that demonstrate most clearly why the board's decision is so illogical. Before I do, I'd just like to say, I don't think it's enough that we're just having us speak. The reopening, school reopening plan that was done was incredible. The way you had all of the Zoom meetings, the way you had all of the team staff involved, the nurse, you had everybody that was there to give us information, to hear questions and comments and respond. I don't see the athletic director here. I don't see the school physician.
He said he couldn't, he was invited, he said he couldn't make it.
I understand. It should have been done at a time when we had that same, the comparison to that to now is incredibly different. And it really strikes me, listening to your presentation, I could go point by point against all of your things and why it doesn't make sense and why we should be more open. I won't for the sake of time and out of respect, but I will say, this is not sufficient. Because our time is limited, as I said, I'm going to highlight the points that demonstrate most clearly while the board's decision is so illogical. So I've broken it into four broad areas. In the first bucket are those six facts that lead most people to conclude that moderate-risk sports can be safely played right now in Bethlehem. The first fact relates directly to everyone's main concern, health and safety. The governor, the state and county Department of Health, and the New York State Public High School Athletic Association all say that moderate-risk sports are safe to play with the proper precautions in place. Second, our statewide and local infection rate remains exceptionally low. Third, we all know that competing in interscholastic athletics helps students in every way that matters. It helps them physically, emotionally, and academically. It teaches them to work as a team, as we're all doing tonight, and how to be strong, confident leaders. Fourth, Bethlehem is one of only two districts in the suburban council that will not be competing in moderate-risk sports this fall at this time. That means there is no chance, even though you're trying to come up with something, we don't know that, there is no chance for our athletes to play in a delayed season later in the year. So they play this fall, or frankly, they probably don't play at all. Fifth, it's even worse for our graduating seniors who won't be able to play the game they love in their final year of high school. And sixth, they won't have a final chance to showcase their skills to college scouts and coaches, losing out on potential scholarships and other playing opportunities at the collegiate level. So our next bucket is the process issues. There are many wrong things that were done. I'm only going to highlight a few of the process issues. Until tonight, the board discussed this issue publicly only once for less than 18 minutes at the board meeting on September 2nd. At that time, you delayed a decision on fall sports pending further guidance from the Department of Health and the Public High School Athletic Association, and pending further discussions with local school superintendents. The board directed our superintendent to gather that information, have those discussions, and if possible, develop a plan to safely compete this fall. Board member Chris Meyer stated he wanted a good faith effort made. He wanted to see if we can get it done. Since that meeting, the Department of Health and the Public High School Athletic Association released guidance saying it's safe to play. And every district in the suburban council at this time, except Bethlehem and Boston Spa, voted to participate in moderate-risk sports. And yet, despite the fact that everything the board was waiting on turned out to favor a return to fall participation, you still chose to disregard the very information each and every one of you, including you, professed would inform your decision-making. The third area to address is the actual decision itself and why it is so fundamentally flawed. Right now as I speak, hundreds upon hundreds of Bethlehem students, boys and girls from kindergarten through 12th grade, in every one of our schools, are already playing moderate-risk sports in organized rec and travel leagues. As I drove here tonight, I saw them. They're playing soccer, baseball, field hockey, and softball. Our parents are smart. They understand the risks associated with playing. But they also know their children can do it safely because they're already doing it safely. How can you possibly deny our student athletes the right to do the very same thing their siblings and their friends are doing every day? That is the very definition of a nonsensical decision. It is arbitrary. It is capricious. And if allowed to stand, it is downright cruel. You say that what families do outside of school is beyond the board's control. I guess that's true so far as it goes, but you do know what's happening. More importantly, our student athletes know exactly what's happening, and they recognize how unfair this is. The final point I want to make is the most difficult one for me to talk about because it's so painful. I believe it is likely the most difficult part for all the other parents as well. That's the emotional damage this decision is inflicting on our children. And make no mistake, your decision has caused our children to suffer. Kids are resilient, to be sure, but that doesn't mean they don't have a breaking point. We all do. There is no indication the district ever truly considered the emotional impact on kids in any kind of formal way. And you're required to do so by the state and by your own, very own, school reopening plans. It's a requirement. Our children are sad and they are hurting. In conclusion, this pandemic has been awful in so many ways. That's why this board decision not to let our kids play hurts so much. These kids have been through so much already, and now they have to deal with this as well. Don't just allow yourselves to check the box that now you allowed us to speak. Please, think carefully and do what Chris Myers and all of you said. Make a good faith effort. What makes it so galling is that it never had to come to this. To use a sports metaphor, this was an unforced error on your part. The good news, though, it's not too late to fix this. And on behalf of all the soccer and field hockey parents, I am begging you to reconsider this and make it happen because we can do it. Thank you. Next up are going to be my other team members, the students.
My name is Daniel Zhou, and I'm a junior on the varsity soccer team. Today, I'll be saying a few words on behalf of our captains and on behalf of the entire boys' varsity soccer team. We would like to begin with an apology for any hostility shown in the name of our cause, and we condemn any inappropriate aggression that may have occurred. While we fully prioritize the education and safety of students throughout the district, we fully believe that soccer and field hockey can be held in a safe manner. We have found no evidence substantial enough to justify depriving our student athletes of an opportunity that is being given to their counterparts all across the region. We feel that those involved with this decision have not been transparent with us. A closed-door meeting was held, and we provided no scientific evidence or sound logistical reasoning as to why we should be denied our season. It is now well-known that executives from the New York State Department of Health, all the way down to the individual school districts of Section 2, have undergone the same decision process as Bethlehem. These organizations have, with an overwhelming majority, found that soccer and field hockey do not pose a high enough risk to warrant a ban in this fall. Yet for reasons that remain unspecified, Bethlehem has decided that our situation is somehow different from our neighboring districts and that it would be unsafe to participate. This came as a shock to many around the region who were left wondering what factors differentiate Bethlehem and why our student athletes should be forced to sit on the sidelines while their peers participate in these sports. We understand that with any activity, there's a risk of transmission between players. However, we feel that the benefits of bringing these sports back far outweigh the costs. It goes without saying that in a time like this, there is massive benefit to the socio-emotional health of student athletes. Thus, the question becomes, what would be the cost of bringing these sports back? Of course, there is a potential for an outbreak. However, state and county health officials have all come to the conclusion that these sports would not increase the probability of an outbreak by enough of a margin to require cancellation. Unless the district can provide evidence contrary to that ruling, we do not understand why participating in these sports would endanger the welfare of other students in the district. Though the district should prioritize education, there's also an obligation to provide extracurricular opportunities. If these can be done with reasonable safety, which they can be, there is no reason to block students from participating. Additionally, on Saturday, the 12th, a petition was formed to allow medium-risk sports to play this fall season at Bethlehem. In less than 24 hours, the petition garnered over 1,000 signatures, and today, the petition has reached a total of 1,573 signatures. It is clear that a substantial number of individuals in this town and in surrounding areas have come to the same conclusion as public health officials, that medium-risk sports do not pose a great enough safety risk to deprive our student athletes of a season. As the Board of Education is a group of elected officials, they should at least acknowledge the opinions of their constituents and understand that the public is in strong support of reintroducing soccer and field hockey. Once again, those in support of district participation in moderate-risk sports understand the gravity of the situation. In no way do we wish to have our sports at the expense of our fellow students. That would be ignorant, unfair, and reckless. However, through an objective lens, we have seen that the overwhelming opinion of state, county, and local officials has been that these sports do not pose a serious risk to public health. As such, we believe there are two ways to proceed. We are either asking for a thorough justification as to why a season is impossible, or for the board and superintendent to overturn their decision. We believe that a decision which goes against the judgment of so many other schools warrants substantial empirical evidence and logistical reasoning as to why Bethlehem cannot afford to reintroduce soccer and field hockey. If no such evidence can be provided, then we feel the district has failed in their decision-making process, and we fully expect to be granted the same opportunities as our counterparts throughout the section. For the well-being of our student athletes and for the greater good of Bethlehem, please thoughtfully consider our requests. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, is that good?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Marissa Mistraco, and I'm a senior here at Bethlehem Central High School. I'm a member of the Bethlehem Girls Varsity Soccer Team, and I wanted to thank the board for letting us all speak tonight. Our main question is, what factors led to your decision on not allowing soccer and field hockey to participate this fall? Other suburban council schools of similar size and similar location to us have gone forward with their decision. They have specific guidelines set in place. For example, Section 2 established guidelines such as limiting spectator attendance, such as wearing masks while playing for all athletes, including medium-risk sports, requiring self-certification before both practices and games. Many of my teammates and I have been playing club sports, and clubs were in a similar situation just recently. Many athletes play for different clubs. They followed state guidelines and created some of their own to increase the safety of everyone involved. These clubs eased into their play. We practiced with limited numbers and social distancing at all times. Coaches were very open and creative when it came to training and limiting contact between players. We then expanded following New York State guidelines set by Governor Cuomo as New York began to open up. We followed the rules because we knew how important this was for everyone's safety. These clubs played, these clubs limited their play to only local teams. High schools would do the same. There's no regionals and no state tournament this year. Colleges are traveling across the state and across the country. However, high school is staying within the capital region, only playing local teams. My team, my team and every team in Bethlehem was very excited to hear that Governor Cuomo okayed medium and low-risk sports to play this fall, along with state athletic associations such as Section 2 and the suburban council. We were really excited to play because we honestly, we take so much pride wearing the Bethlehem jersey every time we step out on the field and representing the Bethlehem Eagles. And we've had a lot of success in doing so. I will always remember going to the state tournament two years ago with my team. We made it to the state final. It was, it was one of the best experiences of my life. Last year, we made it to the, we won sectionals again, and we made it to the regional finals. These are memories I'm going to cherish and carry with me for the rest of my life. I also wanted to thank the superintendents, Board of Education members, and athletic directors from the various schools in the suburban council in which I reached out to recently, especially those from Shen, Gilderlin, Shaker, Avril Park, and Saratoga. They were all very helpful over the phone, email, and video chat in letting me know what protocols they have set in place to keep their student athletes safe this fall. One thing that stuck out to me was when I attended the Shen Board of Education meeting last night. Their athletic director, Mr. Cohen, mentioned that the reason they pushed their sports so much at Shen was because of its importance to students' mental health and their school experience. And I totally agree with this, and the reason why it stuck out to me- And I totally agree with this and the reason why it stuck out to me so much was because that embodies what soccer means to me and what, what it brings to my life. Soccer has taught me leadership. Soccer has taught me how to win and how to lose. Soccer has taught me how to be unselfish and how to work, how to work hard. Lastly, COVID has already taken so much from us. I wasn't able to go to my junior prom. Winter sports were cut short. Spring sports got canceled. And the 20, the graduating class of 2020 wasn't given a proper graduation. Please don't take this away from us, too. All we ask is that you reconsider your decision and let us play. Thank you.
Hello, I am Joanna Van Royen and I'm a senior here and I play in varsity soccer. First and foremost, I would like to thank and commend the school board for their dedication to keep us students and staff safe during this time. We understand your concern that allowing us to play might undermine the precautions you are, you had put in place. However, if you still feel as though the course of action other schools have taken will not suffice here at Bethlehem, we as student athletes will cooperate with any other guidelines the school considers necessary to put in place. Risk is something we, we as athletes and parents acknowledge is a part of the game, which is why taking precautionary measures has become second nature. As Marissa, my teammate, has previously mentioned, throughout the summer, club teams have run while practicing social distancing guidelines without outbreak. Wearing masks to and from the field as well as while we're playing, adjusting our practices, and not shaking hands at the ends of scrimmages have allowed us to get the best of both worlds. Saying, staying safe and being precautious while still being able to play the sport we all love so much. Being a student athlete has become a part of my identity here at Bethlehem. And I'm sure for the others, it is the same. We hope you reconsider your decision and allow soccer and field hockey to play alongside the rest of the suburban council this fall. Thank you.
My name is Avery Daggett and I am a senior at Bethlehem. I'm a two-year varsity lacrosse player and this would be my third year on varsity field hockey. I am speaking tonight in support of field hockey and soccer having a season this fall. I first started playing field hockey in the fifth grade and had never picked up a stick prior to the first practice. When my mom dropped me off, I immediately began to cry. As a quiet, shy kid, I was nervous to try something new, worried I wouldn't be as good as the other kids. I grew to learn that joining the field hockey team was more than just learning to play the sport. It was about working together, creating leaderships, and advocating for yourself and your teammates. And that's why I'm here today, standing in front of all of you, fighting and advocating for a season to take place this fall. Participation in high school activities such as sports is a valuable part of the overall high school experience, enhancing students' school engagement and sense of belonging. I have made some of my best friends playing field hockey over the years, most of whom I would not have met without the opportunity to play. There are also significant physical, social, and emotional benefits to allowing students to play these sports. And with all the terrible things going on in the world recently, sports would be a great distraction for both the students and parents as well. In the crowded and confined school hallways, we are required to wear masks at all times and walk six feet apart from those around us, which will be difficult. While playing field hockey, we will be outside in the fresh air with the ability to spread out more during drills and have added protection from being required to wear a mask at all times. I understand there is risk allowing field hockey and soccer to play this fall. However, there is no more risk than walking down the hallway at school. I believe that all the players can be trusted to follow all established guidelines and protocols. In the last few days, the field hockey and soccer communities have shown their dedication to their sports and surely will be willing to do whatever it takes and follow all rules given for, given to them for the chance to play. It has come to my attention that Bethlehem is the only school district and suburban council preventing field hockey from having a varsity and junior varsity season this fall. As a result, we are unable to have a potential season in the spring like volleyball and football. This is doing the teams as a whole a disservice. We will not be able to practice together this season, hindering our ability to grow and get better as a team. I believe that the coaches of both field hockey and soccer have proposed at least one plan explaining how they will keep their players socially distant. This details how the equipment will be cleaned after each practice, how the players will spread out during drills, and on the sidelines. The coaches have put lots of time and effort into creating proposals that coincide with the guidelines provided by NISFA and Section 2. We ask that you please give them the opportunity to try. The Bethlehem field hockey program has done so much for me over the years that as a senior, I was excited to show the younger players that hard work pays off. I hoped that I could show them what dedication and commitment looks like. I have taught many players through the youth program in local camps, having shown them the basics and watched them develop into the players they are today. The only way to continue to build the program and the culture myself and my fellow seniors have established over the past years is through being together and leading by example. We must be able to demonstrate the importance of hard work, commitment, leadership, and most importantly, acceptance. Without having a season, the ability to accomplish this is taken away from us, hurting not only the older players, but the young ones who are eager to learn. I would like to thank the board for taking the time to listen to us tonight and encourage you all to trust us as student athletes and reconsider your decision to cancel field hockey and soccer this fall season.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Qualia. I'm a senior at Bethlehem High School, speaking in support of the moderate-risk fall sports, field hockey and soccer. It has certainly been a challenging time for everyone and we thank you, Board of Education and all the staff, for your efforts to provide us with a safe return to school this fall. We recognize all of your hard work and dedication and for that, we offer our sincere appreciation. I was a competitive gymnast and a member of the Bethlehem varsity gymnastics team up until seventh grade. This sport meant the world to me. I practiced every day, sometimes twice a day. But it was all worth it because I loved the sport so much. Sadly, this sport was taken away from me when I was diagnosed with a back fracture and severe scoliosis. I was forced to quit and ended up in a back brace. You may be wondering what this has to do with fall sports. Well, at this point in my life, I was ready to give up sports for good. But two weeks before the fall sports tryouts, the Field Hockey Girls convinced me to join them. They looked at me, a four-foot-ten girl with a messed-up back who didn't even know what field hockey was, and invited me to try out and be a part of their team. Every day during those two weeks, I ran a timed mile, sprinted across my backyard, and did yardstick pulls with a hand-me-down stick, all with my best friend by my side. I was terrible. I really was. But she kept practicing with me, kept encouraging me, never letting me think about giving up. When I showed up at tryouts, all the other girls treated me with the same encouragement. They knew I had not picked up a field hockey stick a day in my life, but they were so kind and motivating throughout the tryouts. Even though we were all competing for a spot on the team, these girls were not my competitors. They were my biggest supporters. Surprisingly, I made the team. By sophomore year, I was voted captain and won the Coaches' Cup. I grew so incredibly close with these girls. The friendship I created with my teammates was different than any other friendship I had. We made each other laugh constantly, but pushed each other to succeed as well. Everything we did, we did as a team. The friendships between teammates are hard to explain, but they are very special. Today, I am here to support my teammates that took me in when I was ready to give up. I know what it's like to lose a sport. It's heartbreaking. I do not want my teammates and other fall athletes to lose their sport, too. So, to the Board of Education and to Superintendent Monroe, we ask you to trust us to play. We are aware that there is a risk to letting us play. We want to be part of the efforts to keep ourselves, our teammates, and our student body safe. We would offer to sign a pledge which states that we are taking certain precautions to mitigate our risks, including wearing masks and not engaging in high school activities, high-risk activities outside of school. Sports are an absolutely critical component of health, socialization, self-esteem, and learning to overcome failure and disappointment. And we do not want to lose that this year. Thank you again to everyone for listening. As a student at Bethlehem, I have found that we are a district that is usually willing to make changes in the interest of the students. The staff care about us, they listen to us, and they prioritize us, which is what I love most about our school. Right now, we are calling on you to make a change. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And as we talked, this is a team effort for all of us. I started it. Um, the kids did such an incredible job. I'm going to end it before, um, just want to acknowledge that I know that this is a hard decision. And I know that there's a lot that has to get done. There's a lot of pressure. I recognize the incredible hard work that Jody and her team has, has done to help get this school back up and reopened. And it's wonderful. I really, we need to, though, think very carefully about how we communicate and make sure that we are communicating as effectively, just like you did, with that first aspect of the school reopening plan. You made comments about the fact that, and you did it also at the September 2nd board meeting, that there was a lot of misinformation from parents and you were incredibly surprised by all of the misinformation. Part of that is because of the lack of communication, the same way with the Zoom meetings. None of that happened. But there is misinformation, not just with some of the parents. Parents and the students, as you heard from the students talking about, they went to other school board meetings. They talked to other schools. They got the detailed information. A lot of the information that was given in the first presentation was not necessarily correct or there's other explanations. Point by point, myself can go over that. I won't today. I would look, though, to the experts. The New York State Public School Athletic Association, the State and County Department of Health, all of them, and how other schools have addressed these issues. It is important, though, in your presentation, you made at least two incorrect statements. The State School Superintendent's Association letter was all, that you referenced, was only written by the 12-person executive committee without the approval of the whole body. A number of local superintendents, including Shen, came out against that letter. So, that's the second, the second incorrect statement. You stated that if a team plays only one game and there's a reason for a shutdown, they would lose their whole season and the opportunity to play in the spring. That's just false. It's not true. The state has said if we start in the fall and the season is discontinued, we could restart during fall, too, in the spring. That's really important. It is really important that you get it right and you base your decision based on all of the facts. And try to make this work. We are counting on you to make it work for our kids. It's that important. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our, all the speakers, both for putting together your presentations and for taking the time to come and speak this evening.
Right. So, this, if you all want to, sorry.
I would like to have a discussion at this point. And I'm not sure if there's somebody who is
I'll be happy.
Ready to start with a question, but
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Can I just say like one thing, like I have a ton of things I want to say, but I want something real quick, like, you know, first of all, the, you know, everybody who spoke tonight did a really nice job. I mean, it's very impressive to see, why am I getting all this feedback? Sorry. Those kids get up there and talk like that. So, it says a lot about our school and our parents that they did that. Just one thing that I just want to make sure was that, they keep saying a board decision was made to close sports. I, I, there was no board decision. I want the public to know that there was no closed-door meeting, that this didn't happen. And I keep hearing that it happened, but if it did happen, I missed it. I wasn't there. So, I just, I just want to be very clear that this, this was not a, there was no board decision on this.
There were several comments about being opposed on sports.
There was.
Yeah.
But there wasn't.
Correct. There was no vote.
And it's not a board decision anyways.
I was happy that all the speakers came and they did a great job presenting their thoughts. I just wanted to clarify that we consider the emotional well-being of all of our students, not just the athletes. Um, I think that we are all here on the school board with that in mind. Um, I know that most of us champion emotional well-being of the students and for me, it's always number one. So, I just wanted to clarify that that's always on our minds. Just a couple of things from the presentations was that with regards to what people deserve and it came up about graduation, deserving a proper graduation and being a parent of a senior last year, I felt there was something more special and intimate about that. And I was so grateful for that graduation, more so than the other two that I had that were big and, you know, had all the pomp and circumstance with it. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that I think most parents that were here last year would attest to it being a very special moment. We all, last year, had kids who missed their varsity season, senior ball, senior picnic, senior banquet. And as a parent, I can tell you, and I'm sure everybody on the board knew, I was devastated. You know, that was my son's senior year. So, I can relate to all the kids and how they feel because sometimes I think the parents feel absolutely much worse because it's their kids and, and they're hurting. Um, and I know that our superintendent wouldn't make a decision to negatively affect any child in our school without giving it the proper thought and attention that she thought it deserved. And I feel very confident in the choice that you made based on what you wanted to do for our district, not necessarily based on data or what other districts were doing, but what you felt, knowing the students, the parents, the staff. And you made a hard, difficult choice. And probably the hardest one I've seen in a long time, besides the reopening. And I, I just wanted to say thank you. It's for all the kids, not just medium-risk sports that you have in mind. And it was, uh, just, I'm grateful for, for the choice that you made based on the information and everything you had at, at that time. The only thing I had as a question, though, was we didn't have a lot of information at that first board meeting. And obviously, things came out afterwards. And Mrs. Berman did refer to New York State DOH guidance. Did that come out or I didn't think it came out? I still thought we didn't have information on that.
So, there, there was an update, but it was right after the governor made the announcement. And it basically took what the governor said in his press release that low-to-moderate-risk sports could begin September 21st. The guidance that we've been waiting for, for several weeks now, is on their re, um, return to school or reopening schools that has to do, you know, when the, the governor announced the sports and we had all this conflicting information, we were hoping that perhaps the updated guidance, not just related to this discrepancy, but there's a lot of concerns. Uh, we've had discussions, um, you know, with the screening tool. And if kids show symptoms, having to go to the doctor, get a COVID test before they can return to school. So, there's a lot of information that schools have asked the State DOH for clarif- So, there's a lot of information that schools have asked the state DOH for clarification on, both related to this and unrelated to this, that we've been waiting for. So, no, that has not been released.
And the only other thing that was stated during the presentation that I had a question on was, they wouldn't be able to play other schools if they did a spring-two season, or whatever it was called.
I've already been in touch with, Boston Spa is doing the same thing, so obviously, that would be a suburban school we could compete with. The foothills, all, some of those schools, we already have non-league games with, and we can certainly have games with them. Or, and if we can travel, which I'm hoping at that time, we could play teams in other sections that are on that January schedule. So, would we be able to play the other suburbans that are doing the fall? Then no, but we would be able to play other teams and have a season. It would be a different season, but like everything right now, it's different.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have one, so do you want to go, or?
I just wanted to say first, I wanted to, and it's a little out of order, because after this is when we're technically recognizing our public comment that has come in. But I did want to acknowledge at this point that we did receive a lot of public comment on this issue. There were, in total, probably about 100 emails that came in on this issue. And with respect to the comments that were opposed to the decision to not run the moderate sports, many of them were very eloquently summarized by the speakers this evening, and, but just in general, to summarize, reflected how important athletics are to our students, and how important physical activity and mental health, and the overall social and emotional well-being of our students, how much that's tied into athletics. And then, there were also some comments about concerns that the students might be hampered in college recruiting, and the college application process, some comments that playing outside does not have a very high risk of transmission, that student athletes in general are not at risk of serious illness, and that a lot of these students are already playing in organized rec and youth leagues. And then, we did also have comments that were in support of the decision to not run the moderate-risk sports this fall, and those comments included statements that education needs to come first, and concerns that an outbreak could jeopardize the school calendar and require schools to go 100% remote, and recognized a question of risk, not just to the student athletes themselves, but to the staff members, students, and students' family members, who could be impacted by transmission or an outbreak, and concerns about social distancing not being possible while playing soccer or field hockey, and some general comments that, to keep in mind, that our community includes older residents as well, and that we need to remember that any actions that we take with respect to students also impact those residents during a pandemic. And those, all of the comments that we received will be made part of the, part of the record for this meeting, but I just felt like it was, now is the appropriate time to mention both of those. And, you know, and I do also, I want to acknowledge for all of those people, especially the students that wrote in to us, how impressed I was with their passion and their desire to advocate for what they believe in, because, you know, there, and I hope that they continue doing that, not just with respect to athletics, but with everything. But, Chris, I know you had a question, so why don't you go ahead?
I have a bunch of stuff to say, I just wanted you to. If you're finished, I'll go.
Go ahead.
I just want to cut you off. Okay. First, I just wanted to say, I heard, I think it was Ms. Berman say, she was pointing out about how our reopening plan had, we had many meetings, and this one, we really didn't. It was also, the Times Union article today, where it was mentioned as well. And it's true, but it's true for a reason. We had five months to do our reopening plan. The governor made his announcement on the 25th?
24th or 25th, something like that.
We had a board meeting the following week. It wasn't like, we, you know, the next board meeting was the next thing, and we talked, we talked about it right away, so it wasn't like we, you know, it was hidden. And then the following week, a decision needed to be made, so yes, there was an expediency to that decision, and yes, it was different than the reopening plan, because we had five months, and this, we had 18 days, 16 days? I don't know.
Well, and don't forget, the governor made the decision, but we didn't get any guidance from the state athletic association for a week or so later. I can't remember what the timeframe was exactly, and we were still, still awaiting DOH guidance. I should clarify that, the state athletic association is not really who we take our guidance from regarding health and safety. So, they can put recommendations out regarding the sports, because they oversee sports, but when it comes to health and safety, and that's why they kept referring back to DOH, that is who schools follow guidance from, not the state athletic association.
So, just when she made that point, I ceded that to her, it just, it wasn't, it, sometimes it's on a school, because they, you know, sit there and twiddle their thumbs, you know, this was, hey, here's the, here's the information, we're going to give you a little more information in a week or two, and then you need to decide two days later. Have at it, and it's
I don't believe any schools had public meetings about athletics in this time period, to my knowledge. I think they're having meetings now about, like, coaches' meetings for fall openings, but to my knowledge, there were no, you know, public meetings like we had for reopening.
So, I just, I'm sorry, I'm going to ramble on for a minute, I apologize. I just have a lot to say, because I've been thinking about this for the past two weeks. It's really been, you know, a major issue that I've been looking at. And I want to start, I actually want to start by talking directly to the athletes and say, like, I know this is, this will hurt, like, losing sports would be crushing, you know, it's something you've done your whole life, you know, your friends are there, as they said, you know, they met their friends, their best friends are through there, you know, their summers are based around this, you know? If you're a parent, you know, I would joke that your, your car now comes standard with like a folding chair, sunscreen, and a stench of, you know, sporting equipment, you know, your vacations are planned around this. You know, and the worst part is, you got to watch your kid go through this, you know, hearing that there's no sports, and that's crushing. And I also want to make sure that this isn't like, sometimes we deal these arguments in like, where it's totally in the abstract, and it's not connected. Like, the emails that we got, one email is from my neighbor, you know, it's from a neighbor for 12 years, you know, I've watched all of their kids grow and come through, and they're awesome athletes, and I know losing sports would be devastating. Another email was from a colleague that I work with, who's my friend, and I know how much her family's hurting. You know, and the one that got me the most was once from my, my son's doctor. My oldest has special needs, and this doctor has just done so much for my family in identifying my son's issues and helping treat them, and, you know, I'm on, he wants sports to be going on, you know, and so he disagrees with this decision. So, there is a personal element to this. I don't want to say there's not. But when I looked at all these arguments, you know, I read them all, I read all the emails, and I really, you know, organized them, like, into two main arguments, you know, and, you know, the one, I think you covered pretty well, it was like, why are other schools doing sports? You know, or as some people nicely put, you know, who do you think you are? You know, like, why are we doing this? Why are we going out on a limb? And I, so I did some research, you know, and a lot of it was showing up there, but there's 732 school districts in New York. Sections 4, 8, 9, and 11 aren't doing any sports. That's 233 schools, that's 32% of New York. You add up the other districts around the rest of the state that aren't doing it, I'm sure that number pushes pretty close to 40%. So, four out of 10 schools in New York have no sports this fall, not golf, not tennis, nothing. All right? You mentioned how the 14 schools in the WAC, the Western Athletic Conference, aren't playing. You mentioned the Western League, which I just learned how to pronounce, and how they're pushing back. I mean, Mechanicville is a sports town. I mean, Mechanicville loves their sports, they're probably on par with us in terms of what they love, and they pushed back, everything. Albany's going low risk, Boston Spa is going low risk. You know, I, when we were starting this, you know, we were kind of on an island. We were, what is Bethlehem doing? You know, but now, when we start adding up all these pieces, when you look across the state, we're not, you know, out of the norm here, you know? We're part of the 60% of schools that are offering a sport. You know, and the other argument that I heard a lot, you know, was the social-emotional. And my answer as to that, you're right, there will be emotional pain. I, we can't sit here and say, oh, no, it'll be okay. No, people will be crushed. But this is why I tell my students, every year, I tell my students this, as a teacher, I have three jobs. My number-three job is academics. My number-two job is the social and emotional well-being, but the number-one job is their actual physical safety. So, in most cases, I would say in school, social-emotional gets dealt with right away. If there's bullying going on, we want to stop it. But, this, we are not in a normal time. You know, 200,000 Americans have died, 33,000 New Yorkers have died. So, actual physical safety is critical. In my example of bullying, we want to stop bullying, but if there's a gas leak in the building, you get the kids out, and then you deal with it. We need to deal with COVID. COVID is a real thing. But we play, the other argument I heard was, we played all summer, and it was fine. And I think you hit on this, but I'll go real quickly, but, you know, you would, you accepted the risk, you went from your home to your sporting event, and then you went home. You all understood. I'm part of that. My son did baseball camp this summer. I understand that risk. We, as a family, took that risk. I get it. But now you're in school, and now you're going homeschool sports, back home and school the next day. So, I understand that athletes are willing to take this risk, and I appreciate that. I understand that, because my family did this summer. But now you are adding that risk to the 1,600 kids in Bethlehem High School, and they didn't ask for it. They didn't. So, yes, I understand you assume risk, and it is a moderate risk, and the phrase "moderate risk" just, I mean, I don't want moderate risk in my school, you know? I don't want things to ever be moderate-risk risky. I want it to be safe, you know? So, I, I am responsible for this, as a board member, for the social and emotional well-being of students. I am. And particularly, these athletes who are telling me they're going to be crushed, but I'm also responsible to the 1,500 other kids for their physical safety. They came here based on a plan that was made, and if we deviate from the plan and have sports, did we, did we act in bad faith towards those original, towards the non-athletic students? You know, who are missing music, who are missing theater, who are missing their clubs, who are missing after-school health? You know, Mahanesson, that's the only thing called things, Mahanesson is currently closed. Like, this is real, Mahanesson's closed for two weeks. One administrator got it, and they are closed for two weeks. North Colony already has a case. People are in quarantine. It is real. Columbia, on day two, announced a student with COVID. So, like, this is the question that I'm having, the question that's on the table is this, is, we're trying to keep schools open, and will soccer and field hockey help or hurt our chances of keeping school open? I don't say how it helps, you know, so how much is it hurting? That's a real question. And when we talk about these things, I also mentioned, we also want to mention, like, SUNY Oniana, a college, closed. SUNY Albany, it's in the news today, is getting close to its number where it might need to close. Sorry, I know I've been rambling, I have two more things, and I'll stop. I promise. One thing I might agree on them, though, is this, is about Jody, and so, give me a little leeway here. We both think she's crazy. They might disagree with her decision, but I think you're crazy for another reason, because I'm shocked that you had the fortitude to make this decision. Why? Because going up against sports in the suburban council is a career-ender.
Thank you.
It is. Okay? You know that if you do this, you are going to lose the support of a lot of parents in this district. They are, you know, Ms. Berman, I don't want to speak for her, that would be totally inappropriate, but I'm sure there are many parents who would be upset, if you, if you kept this decision. So, the politically expedient thing for you to do is to give up. That would make your job so much easier. Just quit, you know, just, just whatever, we're going to allow sports. That would be so much easier. So, why are you doing this? I'm guessing. I'm guessing you're doing this because you believe in the safety of our students, but I also believe this, you worked for five months on a plan. Five months, okay? And all of these plans at every school district are hanging on by a thread. When I talk to my fellow teachers, I talk, like, we're on a cliff, like, we really are on a cliff. And all it's going to take is one case, two cases, in the right spot, we're done. We're virtual, we're remote, it's done. So, I know, I appreciate what you're doing. It's courageous, okay? You don't have to agree with it, you can say that she's, that Jody is totally wrong, that's absolutely fine, but my God, this, this, this was a brave moment of yours. And my final thought is this, this is my final thought, and I will stop. I actually hope that the parents and students are right. I hope that you are correct. Because why? Because that would mean that nobody got sick. I don't, I don't, I want to root against you, because that means I'm rooting for kids to get sick. That's disgusting. I want this all to be over. But what if you're not? What if Shen plays Bethlehem and Saratoga in the same week, and a kid from Shen has COVID? Could that potentially shut down three schools? I don't think that's crazy. So, I just, I just have so many concerns and so many worries about going forward with this. I think that we are here, I spoke to principal, I spoke to other superintendents, we are here to open a school. We are here to open a school, and we need to do that. This is a once-in-a-hundred-year event. This is, you know, the last time we had this was the Spanish Flu in 1918, you know, 100 years ago. We need to do everything we can to keep this school open, and that is the most important thing. Sorry, I'm done.
That's a tough act to follow, Chris.
Sorry, I've thought about this for like, two weeks. This is really all I've been thinking about. I have lost a lot of sleep.
Coming from a teacher who has to social distance his classroom, so you have every right to be as passionate as you are.
Well, it's just a big issue. I mean, I don't want these students to think that, like, we don't care, like, I do care. I care about your social-emotional needs very much, but I care about your physical safety more. 33,000 people in our state have died from this. This is real.
You know, in a large, in a large way, one of the, one of the later speakers, she said, "Risk is part of the game, and we, we accept the risk, but risk of death has never been part of the game." And the problem with accepting risk today is that risk comes with a very real chance that someone is going to die. One of these students is going to die. And I certainly don't want it on my watch, I don't want any student to be in that situation. There was a time, Jody, I don't remember how far back it was, I certainly wasn't on the board, but we changed the walking distance in the school.
That was, yeah, seven or eight years ago, maybe?
And one of my comments was, because I was concerned, we don't have sidewalks in the community, and I was seeing in those days, large snowbanks, well, larger than they are now, not as large as in my childhood, but we won't discuss that. But, and the kids would be walking, the students would be walking in the lane, in the traffic lane of the street, to get to their bus stop, and my comment was, you know, there's going to be, the first child that dies is going to put an end to this. I don't want a child to die, but I was really concerned. My concern for that is infinitesimal compared to my concern now. And bottom line is, no one ever died by not playing soccer, but now with COVID, you could. And bottom line is, no one ever died by not playing soccer. But now with COVID, you could.
But the other thing too, it's just not all data-driven. I think that's where a lot of the adults or students are getting hung up, is the risk is low. But you don't know, even if it's, let's say, less than 1%, you don't know who that less than 1% is. And even if they're out playing travel, that's their choice. I mean, we would probably prefer they not play travel sports and come to school to protect the safety of our students, but we can't stop that. But as a board, we have to protect, even if it's less than 1%, I don't think that we can say that it's okay. And it's a hard decision, and it's not, it's in our purview or your purview to decide if that's okay for your school.
So, I did, one thing I didn't mention in the presentation is, I did have a lengthy discussion with our school physician about the whole wearing of masks in playing sports. I was concerned, not just about, is it really safe, but also, is it really safe to try and, you know, in field hockey, wear a mouthguard, wear a mask in running up and down a field? I thought it would be a hardship for breathing. And he told me, he really didn't have concerns about that. You adjust, you kind of get used to it. But that, although a mask, wearing it in a sport certainly provides something that you also have to consider when you're running up and down fields. I think about soccer, field hockey, you're running into people, you're inhaling greater, you're exhaling greater, that even with a mask, your potential to inhale greater particles or exhale greater particles is a real concern. So, there's just not, basically, there's just not enough evidence right now, because all of this is just evolving, to say, does that really add much protection when you are breathing that hard, in particular, sports, and you're coming into direct physical contact? He's like, it's better than nothing, but he can't say that it would provide a whole lot of safety. And I can, that makes sense to me.
I wanted to touch base on something you just said, though, about the data. Because as someone who, since February, as a public health official, has spent 20 hours a day dealing with COVID, and I've sat in a room contact tracing for 24-hour shifts at a time, there absolutely were clusters of COVID throughout the summer directly linked to travel leagues and recreational sports. And it might not have been here, and it might not have been these students, but to say that it went on all summer and it wasn't a problem is completely not accurate in other parts of the state. And we have students in this building not receiving in-person education because they're under quarantine for sports-related exposure. So, I really, I struggle with how many times throughout the emails I read that this has been going on all summer without an issue. So, I just, I felt like I needed to correct that out loud.
And in speaking with the Department of Health's Joanne Menrath, basically said the same, that to say that there are no incidents related to use sports is not accurate, that they are dealing with incidences of exposure and quarantining as a result of sports.
Jody, how many people in the school are quarantined because of this?
I think 14 students are quarantined.
So, we have 14 students that are quarantined?
From, right, from soccer.
Okay.
Can we talk about practice? I know that I asked it at the last meeting. I wanted to follow up about whether or not there was a way to potentially move to a fall-two season, but to allow student athletes to condition and practice in some socially distant way now. I know that they want to play, and they want to play against other suburban council. But there has to be a benefit to being able to practice and utilize our coaches, who have a lot of talent, to share. Is there a way, have we thought about how we could do that?
Right. So, if we go with the fall, if we have the fall-two model for, that would be for football, volleyball, soccer, field hockey, I don't believe they could practice. But what we have talked about with the principals and with the athletic director is, once we get schools open, once we see how things are going, can we find ways to provide opportunities for students to be here for an intermural kind of experience, or for club activities where it's in a safe environment? So, that's something that we do want to hopefully be able to add into our reopening. But to do it right away, I think, would be kind of irresponsible, because we're trying to just keep everyone safe during the day, which is, you know, a challenge in itself. We're having a min-council meeting today to just talk about all the, you know, do you use soap and water? Do you use disinfectant? I mean, there's just so many little details. So, yes, that is something that we want to be able to do. But we wouldn't do it until we, you know, get a little bit of time into school, see how things are going. As Chris said, there's already been a couple positive cases in local districts, and see what we can eventually add safely. So, but it wouldn't be practice per se.
Just to clarify, when you're saying that they, if we did the fall-to spring season, they could, I'm not sure what to call it, they couldn't practice now because of rules relating to how sport is played in the state?
I'm guessing that, just like most things, when your season starts, your season is from here to here, you start practice at a certain time, and you have to get X amount of practices in before you can participate in a game. So, I think if we're saying, we would go with that fall-two model for these sports, we would have to follow whatever that, those timelines are. But it doesn't say we couldn't offer some kind of a intermural option. We just couldn't say it's, you know, practice.
Okay. Can I, just to follow up, Ms. Burman's, at the end, talked about some guidance that says that you could try to start in the fall, have to stop, and then still have a fall-two season. I'm wondering if you know what guidance she was referencing?
I talked to our athletic director about that, and I believe that that would require some kind of a waiver from the state association. My understanding is, currently, if you're playing a fall sport and districts get shut down, and you've already competed, the season is over. I think that that's been brought up to the state association, but I'm not aware of any kind of concession on that at this time. Not saying it can't happen.
And do you, I'm sorry, now I just keep going. Do you, have you had the impression from any other schools that there's still the potential for them to do this fall-two model?
That any of them, any of the schools that are within these, or any other sections, quite honestly, until they actually compete, could make a change.
Okay.
Once they start competitions, I don't believe they could then say, we're, because they've already now competed.
Okay. Thanks.
I believe.
I have a question about numbers. Do we have any guidance from Albany County Department of Health on what triggers a building shutdown?
We've had some of those questions. There's really no specific number, per se. I think a lot of it depends on how many people potentially are impacted.
Okay.
And also, if you can really contact trace.
Right. Because right now, there's 3,000 cases, almost, in Albany County of positive cases. I have no idea where those are. Are they in Bethlehem? Are they in Colony? Are they in Waterbleed? Are they in other parts of the county? Very hard to make decisions about safety when there's no real guidance at your fingertips. And again, we have six, over 1,600 kids in this building every other day. And, I don't know, I don't, I'm not comfortable putting them at risk. I'm just, it's just not a comfortable thing. This is not an easy decision. There are no winners here. We have incredible athletes. The students were amazing. And it's a very brave thing to come up here and be passionate about your sport. But I just still am not comfortable with the knowledge that I have of other schools shutting down very quickly or going to all-remote learning in just the first couple of days of school. And we have worked so hard to keep this building open, to keep these buildings open. We have 87% of our student body and the parents in our community that want our kids to have school. And that's an awful lot of, that's an awful lot of trust being placed in us. And this is not any kind of easy reconsideration. It wasn't a board decision to begin with, as Chris stated. But we're definitely invested in this argument and in this conversation. And that's why we're having this discussion right now. Because, you know, do you want, of course, we want kids to play, but I just don't know if it's possible to safely do that.
Can you just speak a little bit more to why it makes more sense to do a fall-two season as opposed to hypothetically, if everything is going well, do a delayed start of the season in the fall?
So, with a delayed start, in consulting with a school physician on timeframe, let's say we started, instead of the 21st, we waited a couple more weeks, or at least, where we're in school a little bit longer, looking at, I think I looked at a date, verified with him, I think it's, what's the Friday, October 2nd, or something like that, where we would have been in school a solid two weeks. And then there's a requirement for, I believe, 12 practices. So, we would, the season would be underway, so we would essentially be forfeiting any games that we would be scheduled for until we had enough practices in, which would put us playing maybe sometime around, I don't know, maybe 12th or 15th of October, or something like that. So, I think that we actually would miss several games, where if we went to that fall-two model, hopefully, if things are better, we would know that the season is starting, ending here, and be able to schedule X number of games. The other, I think, reality, let's be honest, is that when we look at what's happening with colleges, or even some school districts, I think, thinking that we're going to be able to get a full fall season in is probably unlikely. At least, that's my prediction. I hope I'm wrong. I just think that the fall-two provides more certainty, and also allows us to plan beginning now to setting up a schedule. And to say that there won't be any teams to play, you know, really is not, yes, I said, the Suburbans, that we only have Boston Spa, there might be one or two that end up changing. But there's several other local school districts, again, that we already can play non-league with, that I'm sure would be willing to compete with, or even out of section. There's a lot of, as Chris said, there's, how many hundreds? 200-plus schools?
233.
233, thanks.
Or so. I may have, I counted quickly with my finger, so if I'm off, it's 234, I apologize.
Right. So, I think the March timeframe, one, just gives more certainty. And it gives the kids a season that they can actually plan for, providing everything. I mean, people keep saying, it's going, it's going to get better by then. Let's hope that's true. So, I think the, just the certainty of it, and the fact that even delaying it, we still are very early on in the school year to bring that risk on. So, that's why I think the March timeframe is better.
And is it still accurate that there aren't, there is no, there aren't going to be any sectionals or state championship or anything like that? So, they wouldn't be at a disadvantage of playing other schools outside of suburban council, or?
Right. There's no sectionals or states for the fall sports.
And the only other question I had about moving things to the spring is whether there's any issue with respect to the type of field that the sports play on, in particular, field hockey, like whether, if that is an issue?
Well, I mean, in speaking with our athletic director, I did talk about, we might have to consider trying to find places where there is turf, depending on what the weather conditions are. You know, we could have even a round-robin tournament, where there are several teams, similar to what they do when there are sectionals. That could be an option. So, I think there's plenty of, I'm not, you know, our fields are pretty soggy. Maybe if, with all the drainage and the time off, they'll be better in the spring. But we would likely have to look for, you know, some other options. The other thing I would say is that, depending upon what other schools do, if they're planning to do varsity JV for the March timeframe, that might be a time where we can do varsity and JV if things are, if things are better.
I think you've answered a lot of my questions, which I appreciate. I was wondering if you could actually name some of the schools that we're talking about, who are, would be playing the fall-two season, and the different, I don't know who plays in those different leagues. So, what kind of schools are we talking about?
So, in the foothills, I can't name all of them, but Scotia Glenville is one of them, Queensberry, South Glens Falls, Glens Falls. I think Broad Alvin Perth might be in that group. In the Wasseren leagues, we're talking, do you have the list there, Chris?
Yeah.
Oh, Chris can help. Thanks.
The Wasseren League, once again, just learned that one. Berlin, Cambridge, I always say this wrong, Greenwich?
Greenwich, yeah.
I always want to say, like, the one in London. Huzick Valley, Huzick Falls, Mechanicville, Saratoga, Central Catholics, Stillwater, Tamarack, Waterford, Half Moon. And then the, the other one that just, the Western Athletic Conference, the one that said they weren't going to play soccer. Burnox Westerlo, Kansas, Harry, Duanesburg, Fulton, Bonneville, Fort Plain, Galloway, Mayfield, McKeel, Middleburg, Northville, NDBG, Oppenheim, I'm not even going to try that second part, and Skowhary.
Yeah. And the foothills are more similar in size to us. Not as big, but they're larger school districts.
I thought it was a real important point that we get out the fact that there have been incidences in club sports. I understand a lot of the emails we got said that there's been no incidences in club sports. There have been, and that we currently have students in quarantine because of that. So, I think that's important for the public to know. There's also been incidences of people in athletic community not being cooperative with the Department of Health, and instances where departments of health have not spoken to one another. I was reading an article on the situation in Mahanesson. And what it seemed to have happened there was, an administrator lived in one county and reported his results to that county. That county did not speak to the county in which the school was in. And that's a real concern. And I'm not blaming anyone for that. Obviously, this is a very difficult situation, and we are all learning how to do this, including our departments of health. But I see, and I wonder what happens if we play, you know, a team in Saratoga County, if we play Saratoga, and there are results in Saratoga, and we don't find out about it. That is very concerning to me. And if we wait to play till March, hopefully, a lot of these processes will be perfected at that point. We will know, we will know better how to contract trace. We will understand how better to have our health departments speak to one another. I just wanted to commend Chris for his comments. You said so much of what I wanted to say in such an eloquent way, so I really appreciate how organized and well-prepared you were, and wanted to echo a lot of what you said. One of the things that we were talking about was data, and Christine was saying, you know, she didn't think we were dealing with that much data. But actually, I think we are looking at the data. And one of the reasons we can even open our school is because our infection rates are so low. And I wanted to say how grateful I was. Our biggest concern is opening our schools and keeping them open. Jody was talking earlier about the amount of work that went into an elementary school dismissal. I have witnessed that. I've been part of that the past two days. And we do, and we need every adult available to help that process. It involves walkie-talkies, and, you know, Google Maps and arrows and everything like that. And everyone has been so grateful within that process. I know it's been difficult. You're stuck in tra- I know it's been difficult. You're stuck in traffic. But I haven't seen one person beeping on a horn or getting upset because their kid wasn't right where they were supposed to be. Because we all understand how much work has gone into this. And I'm so grateful to everyone who's put together those plans. But it does, it takes tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of resources. And I don't want to jeopardize any of that at this very critical point. We have been open for two days. I know every parent in our community has been grateful for the opportunity for their children to go to school. Even, you know, even our parents who are in the virtual community have said how wonderful that has been for them. But they are also so happy that our schools can be open for our community. I wanted to first of all, thank and acknowledge the students who spoke here. I know it was difficult. And what I saw tonight was real leadership. And I think they demonstrated leadership that they learned on the athletic field. I think everything they said was absolutely true about the lessons that we learn as athletes. And we saw that tonight. I'm proud of them for standing up for their teams. I'm proud of them for standing up to the board. I truly am. But I want to talk about the other leadership that we are seeing here tonight, which was Jody's decision. We heard from so many parents, so many emails, that other schools are doing this, that we should follow along. And I think that we should be leaders. If another school makes a decision that we do not agree with, that would not work for our community, that we do not feel reflects our values, we're not going to follow. And I think that we saw Jody exhibit leadership here by saying that she did not want to jeopardize our opening in order to have athletics in the fall. I am, I have a lot of hope that we can have the fall two season. And I think the leadership that we're seeing here is making a difficult decision and also thinking of the entire team. In this situation, the entire team is our entire community. Not just our students, but when we think about community spread, you know, we heard so many people say, well, athletes aren't at risk. They're not going to get sick. Well, we have to think of the community spread with our entire community. Who is at risk? And I feel like Bethlehem right now is a team. And we need to look out for everyone. And I just wanted to say to Jody that I appreciate your leadership in making this decision. It was very difficult. It's going to be heartbreaking for so many people. But I hope that they can have hope about this March two season. I hope everybody continues to wear their masks, continues to wash their hands, continues to fill out the COVID screening form properly and honestly. And if those things happen, hopefully we can stay a healthy community and have sports in the fall two section. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Meredith.
Oh, can I just, I just want to address, like, I wasn't, I wasn't saying we didn't look at data. I just wanted to clarify. It was that the decision to not have moderate-risk sports, it wasn't just based on data. That we took a lot of other factors into consideration, or Jody did in regards to, you know, thinking of every student and the community as you just presented. So it just wasn't, a lot of the emails talked about the data and being very low risk. And it just wasn't about, like, if somebody came and got COVID. It was a lot more than that. It was about the school shutting down and not being able to provide to all the students, so.
Willow, did you have any other questions or comments? Christine?
Nope.
Jonathan?
I want to hear what she wants, what she's going to say next.
I actually had one more question. And it's really just because I'm not, I don't have a lot of information myself about how the process works. But I know there is, was concern from a number of, in the number of the emails that we got about the college recruiting process and the detrimental impact on the students of pushing sports to, you know, the spring, not having a season in the fall. So I didn't know if there's anything that you could say on that or whether that's something that Len could just comment on at some point to us.
Sure. I mean, I could get some more information. But essentially, if we have the fall two season, those athletes will be able to, you know, have colleges look at them, if that's what they desire, if they're a senior at this point and we're planning to play in college. My guess is they were already in touch with college coaches well before now, so.
Okay.
And just to touch on that, I worked with somebody whose son is a senior who plays baseball, I think down in New Berlin outside of Oneonta. And then they've been playing all summer in rec leagues and they've been having recruiters come out and look at them in those type of environments. So I think, like they alluded to, that the coaches for seniors, they already know who they're looking at and have a good idea.
Okay. Thanks. Willow, did you or Chris or Meredith have anything else?
I'm just shocked that the athletic director is not here for us to ask questions to. But that is what it is. But I just wanted to add one more thing. As far as seniors, are there, all of their games are pretty much videotaped, right?
They can be.
Or that they have played in, if they've played.
Sure, yeah.
If they've been playing, you know, if they played varsity last year and now they're a senior and they're worried about now. There's video evidence of their, of their skill and their ability to get a scholarship.
Right. I would think if they were interested in playing in college, they would have done a lot of that, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I want to, yeah. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're not blowing anybody's chances.
And most of the guidance counselors are aware of it too because they have to follow certain criteria to play athletics at the college level. So they have to make sure that they hit all their academic requirements. So I would say they would, the counselors knew as well.
Right.
Most of the stuff's done at the end of the junior year anyway.
Or before.
I mean, it was, I know it was for Ben. By the end of his junior year, he had, he had basically three options as far as, you know, where he could go and get a decent part of a ride.
Right.
So, you know, maybe running is different than all other sports. I don't know. But, you know, I think it may, in some, in some sense, it may hurt this year's juniors. But if we have the spring, it won't. If we don't have the spring, they will still have summer and fall next year, hopefully. So, you know, I don't see the harm in maintaining the decision that we've done because I think it's the safest decision for not only the athletes, even though they'll disagree with that, but also for keeping the school open and for the community.
A lot of colleges are shutting down. I mean, I know my son's at Lemoine, they're not playing. My daughter was online at Oneonta, but they shut down altogether. Cortland shut down their sports for two weeks because some athletes and Greeks got some COVID and they had to shut down sports. So it's quite common that sports brings COVID to their campuses. So I don't know how we could say that we aren't doing the right thing in the long run.
Anything else? Okay.
I do want to wrap up this evening by commenting really about how disappointed I've been in regard to the responses to this decision to not hold moderate-risk sports. I completely understand the disappointment, the calls to reconsider this decision and perhaps not understanding all the reasons why this decision was made. What I've had trouble understanding is the number of emails that members of the Board of Education and I have received making claims of hidden agendas, threats about what could or would happen if we didn't have soccer and field hockey, and emails that accuse me of not caring about the health and well-being of students. Many that I've received expressed a level of anger that took me by surprise and that were not only untrue, but unkind. Many of these emails were the worst I've received in my 26 years in education as a teacher, a principal, or a district administrator. In fact, I was so surprised when I see several emails from parents and staff members that were supportive of the district's decision and asked me not to share their names for fear of retaliation. My goal is to first and foremost ensure a safe school environment for all students and staff every day, but especially in the midst of a global pandemic. I know the value of athletics in other student activities. I was a student athlete and coached for several years. My field hockey coach was one of the most influential people in my life and inspired me to become an educator. So this decision was not made lightly. Our goal and my goal is to mitigate risk as much as possible. Because let's be honest, just opening our schools carries risk. But where we can limit the risk, we should. Where and when we can open up more opportunities for our students, we will. I cannot control what people do outside of school. But we have an obligation to do as much as we can to control what happens in our schools. And that is why I made the decision I did. I do not want to see our schools closed and our halls empty again. A return to closure would be the worst-case scenario for our school community. As we move forward, there will be difficult decisions that will need to be made. I was so impressed with how our school community came together in support of our reopening plans to ensure a safe return to school. As we move forward, it is my hope that as we deal with these issues, our school community will reject divisiveness and work together to ensure our schools remain open so that we are able to provide all of our students with the best educational experience. Thanks.
Jody, I for one, fully support what you've done, why you've done it, and how you've done it. And I think it's one of the, yes, it is courageous. But it's also the smart thing, the wise thing. And I'm honored to be working with you because this could not have been done better.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for putting the presentation together tonight and for what I know was a tremendous amount of time and energy that has gone into looking at this issue and trying to find some solution that will work. I don't think, I think all of us know how much effort you have put into it and know how important our students' health and well-being and safety is to you.
And I think this public discussion really was important and really valuable, not just for us, but for everyone that's interested in the subject. I think it was really important that we do this tonight.
Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment that was submitted. And I did just want to say that, you know, I'm sure that we all wish that we were in a position where we could have everybody who wanted to comment here in person with us. But that we, for our own safety and for the safety of the public, we have restricted access and under the governor's executive order. And I just feel like it's important to say that as well.
Well, I would just also say this, that, you know, under the executive order, this could have been a Zoom meeting. Like, this could have been a Zoom meeting. We, as a board, did not want a Zoom meeting. We wanted that, those comments. Like, I needed that. I needed to hear the parent and those five kids talk. I wanted that. And I think it was really important that we did that in person so we could have that and take that in.
Yeah, I miss seeing the students' faces out there, even if they're the pig students that don't really want to be here. We did have, and as I said, the comments that came in relating to the athletics issue, because there were so many, I'm not going to read all of them. I sort of summarized them before and they will be attached to the record. We did actually have three additional comments that I will read that did not pertain to soccer and field hockey. One was from Tim O'Meara, who writes, "I'm concerned by news that mask breaks are occurring inside classrooms and simply mean taking face coverings off in crowded indoor enclosed spaces. When I first heard about this new aspect of in-person pandemic education, I assumed this would mean moving outside to fresh air and removing face coverings in accordance with published best practices. Recent studies find prolonged indoor exposure with intermittent mask breaks are the single most significant predictor of COVID infection. Please act swiftly to eliminate this dangerous practice."
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, if you can comment on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of discussions about mask breaks. But yes, ideally, mask breaks are best done outdoors. And also, the other guidance we've given everyone is that if you're doing a mask break, the easiest way is for students to take a quick break when they're in a hallway. You know, like, they could step outside the classroom and take a break, get a drink of water or something like that. But not large-scale, everyone in your class, take your mask off for 10, 15 minutes. That's not happening. And we just had this discussion today at Admin Council. And the teachers are already finding that most of the students really are really pretty good. They're not asking for breaks to take their mask off. They have lunch. They're taking outside for a walk. They can, you know, remove their mask for a few minutes. But we're not doing class mask breaks, which is sounding like what he's referring to.
Concerned about, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. We also had a comment from John Arneson. "Can you please explain what BCSD will be doing to ensure that those students participating in the girls' varsity swimming and diving team will be protected from airborne transmission of the COVID-19 virus? The combination of an indoor pool area, unmasked students, physical exertion, and extended practice times seems like a high-risk situation. We are concerned that our daughter is being put in an untenable position, being asked to choose between her sport and her health."
So my understanding of swim, first, we're doing only virtual meets. So we won't have students here from other schools. But we'll have only limited number of students who are in the pool area. So the one group will be in the pool competing. And other students who are waiting, the next group would be on deck with masks on until they were able to get in the pool. So there's not going to be, if you go to swim meets, there's large numbers of kids and family. That won't be happening. They'll be staggered to go into the pool area, compete, and then leave.
And will we be limiting spectators?
No spectators for swimming.
I did have a question about that, about locker rooms with swimming. I understand, swimming is the only sport I see that you would really need to use locker rooms. What are we doing about that?
So we'd, yeah, we'd have to use the locker room. We talked about, again, staggering the number of kids in there, marking off like where they can be socially distant. We also talked about when there's meets, having a chaperone in there to tell kids when to go out and to, so it would be much more organized.
I think you would have to have someone coordinating all of that.
Yes, exactly.
And then we had one last comment from Ye Chen, who writes, "I am writing to hope in today's meeting you will discuss the school or parental control and internet filtering on Chromebooks for students. We know technology helps a lot for work and study and social activities, especially during the pandemic time. But young students need help on how to use the technology to benefit their schoolwork. Some students cannot help themselves spending too much time on the internet, videos, games, social platforms, et cetera. And some of these things are not good. So we must take action on this. For example, we do not like when students are taking classes or doing assignments or projects using Chromebooks and random notifications or pop-up messages and advertisements show up to distract our students. Students spend too much time on games, videos, and other useless things. When students watch school videos or lectures via YouTube, some other irrelevant videos are pushed to our students. For example, and it looks like- For example, and it looks like there's an attachment, videos in a picture attached to this email while watching the school videos or after watching the school videos. And many other things not listed here. I believe other families will have a long list. I know some schools and teachers are using YouTube and other free resources on teaching. It is convenient, but please consider the harm to our students with these things coming together. For YouTube, I do not know if it works out or not. Maybe we could have a private channel for BCSD. Our students could access that channel only through the school Chromebooks. And all of the other things in YouTube and the many other websites we don't use in school education could be blocked out." Thank you for your attention. Next on our agenda tonight, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item, number one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 14.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 10.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, number one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, future meetings and events. On Thursday, September 24th, at 5:30 PM, there's a facilities committee meeting. Wednesday, September 30th, at 6:00 PM is our board retreat. Monday, October 5th, at 5:30 PM is an audit committee meeting. And then Wednesday, October 7th, is our next board meeting at 7 o'clock, anticipating an executive session at 6:00. And the meeting after that is on Wednesday, October 21st. Again, 7 o'clock, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00. And the meeting following that, no, sorry, Monday, October 26th is, at 6:00 PM is our policy committee meeting.
Holly, the board retreat is in person?
I think we could do it by Zoom. And I would be okay with that unless anybody objects. So I would say, why don't we plan to do it that way? In an effort to minimize our exposure to each other. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.